Call this meeting in order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation following.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Goodar.
Here.
Green.
Here.
LaBour.
Here.
Mistravich.
Here.
Ricks.
Here.
Schultz.
Yeah.
Yar.
Here.
Let's see, everybody's here, and I approve the minutes for the regular meeting of December 2nd would be in order.
So moved.
Support. This has been made and supported, is there any discussion on the minutes? Be you not, all in favor, the motion is signified by saying aye. Aye. Against, motion does pass. We move on to audience comments on any non-agenda items, if anybody would like to address the City Council, we ask to come to the podium, state your name and your address for the record if you're not on the agenda. Would anybody like to address the City Council at this time? Be you not, we will move on. Mr. City Manager, I'm sorry, adoption of agenda, Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
City Council, any changes?
No.
Be you not, motion to accept the agenda as presented would be in order?
So moved.
Support. Motion been made and supported, any discussion? Be you not, all in favor, the motion is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Motion's been made and supported, there is no discussion on the motion, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. We have three items for consideration this evening, the first one being consideration of the adoption of special event application for the Winter and Ice Festival, Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to give consideration to a request from the Richmond area Chamber of Commerce for the 2014 Richmond Winter and Ice Festival. This is the 13th year the Richmond Chamber of Commerce has run the Winter and Ice Festival. This year's event will be held on Friday, February 7th through Sunday, February 9th. The event will still feature ice sculptures along Main Street, an arts and crafts show and the mini mall, and I believe the Richmond area good old days will be running an event over at the park for the snowmobile races again. As far as the chamber events go, there are some changes on their end, they'll be doing, instead of the Taste of Richmond, an opening night gala inside Maniachi's with ticket purchase required. They would also like to request from Council the approval to erect approximately a 40 by 60 tent within the municipal parking lot that would then host kind of a warming station throughout the weekend and the chili cook-off potentially. They'd also like permission to utilize Maniachi's alcohol license to serve within the tent on Saturday, and the use of a city generator possibly for the chili cook-off and events in the tent. We do have one generator that will more than likely be with the snowmaking machine, we have some other generators. The city also at one time put 220 on the outside of that building when we used to be able to use the Comcast truck to tape the parades, and so there may be a potential there that we don't need the generator, we'll just have to kind of follow up on that. Also, there'll be a professional wrestling event at the high school gymnasium on Sunday. And then lastly, the chamber would like permission to place additional signage throughout the city, such as in front of the odd and the chamber offices, as well as some lawn signs at some of the city entrances.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion? I'm sorry, excuse me. Jill Elbin is the Executive Director, would you like to make any type of presentation to the City Council? John pretty much covered it, but if there's anything you'd like to say, it's Council's...
Well, it's a wish list, I guess that's what I want to say, I'm hoping that this will come to fruition, but I ask for the world and I, you know, get what I get. But we would like to do something different, it's been kind of, we've been a little bit in a bind, a little bit sometimes using the odd because of other things that have, you know, come up where we had to either move something up or, you know, vacate it, so we were trying to come up with a different solution, and that's why, you know, the suggestion of a tent, and I know there's a lot involved in that, I'm finding that out, and we don't really want to run it like a beer tent, I just, you know, thinking of limiting the amount of alcohol just during the time like of the chili cook-off. The only other thing that I might add is that we are going to try to resurrect the Taste of Richmond, maybe on Saturday night, also utilizing that tent, but that's, you know, that's up to the restaurants as to whether they want to participate, it would be on a smaller scale and invitation only. So, we're trying to get a lot of different things, it's local, you know, it's situated in a wonderful spot for us, and that's really about it.
Very good. Is there any questions of the Executive Director? Thank you.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the special event application for the 2014 Richmond Winter and Ice Festival scheduled for February 7th through the 9th with the following request: 40 by 60 foot tent within the municipal parking lot next to Maniachi's, permission to have beer and wine service within the tent on city property, use of the city Richmond's generator, and additional signage.
Support. Motion's been made and supported, discussion? I'm assuming it's a post tent, have they been informed that it'd have to be a post tent, not a...
Not stake-driven, yes, I have talked to Jill about that, that they cannot pound stakes into the pavement.
And the insurance wouldn't go insure the city of Richmond for the liquor? Okay. Anything else? Be you not, any audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion passes. Good luck, Jill, hopefully the weather's with us this year. Item number two is consideration of library board letter, Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a letter received from the library board, the board expressed concerns over the current combined position, in 2011, the City Council, Library Board and Recreation Board approved combining the positions due to declining revenues and the potential of more cooperation with the departments. In reviewing the letter, they're kind of looking for some help from Council and looking at this issue, kind of outlined in a paragraph some options for Council, inviting both boards to the quarterly, scheduling a separate special meeting with all boards, or forming a committee, or obviously doing nothing, but I don't know how realistic that is. I did not provide a motion, it's kind of, we haven't discussed this, but I know with the holidays coming up and different meetings coming up, if we don't kind of come up with a game plan, it'll be budget time before we even form, do anything, so with that, I kind of left it for Council's pleasure.
Very good. Is there a motion for discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I moved to form a committee to address the concerns in the library board letter, and that committee will report back to Council within 60 days. This committee would be made up of two members, from City Council, two library board members, two rec board members, the City Manager and our library and parking rec director.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll support.
Support's been made, discussion?
Just like to say that, as the motion maker, to say that the library board, I appreciate they articulated their concerns, we've had some time to look over their letter and get some other feedback, I, we were given, one of the suggestions was a committee, and I think due to the size of trying to bring in, basically, I didn't like the option of having the Council, the rec board, and the library board, it's a little hard, unworldly, that not many people to try to have a frank discussion of the issue, so I thought that kind of kept it within, kept it a reasonable size that we could get, there could be some productive solutions to their concerns.
Agreed, 100 percent with you. Any other comments?
I would just have one on the 60 days, I would hope that we're able to meet quickly and come up with some ideas, but let's just assume that we can only meet once a month, that's two meetings and then we're done. Council's pleasure, if Council's comfortable with the 60, but one thought would be to maybe make it more.
I would, I would, I've talked to Councilor Yarck on this before, I would say, I agree wholeheartedly with the 60 days, I think we need to have, the whole idea of doing the committee rather than trying to get everybody together, as we have tried to find, you know, find dates for the City Council alone, as you well know, John, very, very complicated. I would hope that whoever serves on this committee are going to be people who know that they have to meet, and it won't be for two hours, it's going to be whatever it's going to take, I would like to see this happen sooner or later, I think we have a very deep concern from them, others have deep concern, including myself, on what's going to happen here, and as you well know, if anybody would know, the job of the parking rec director gets really going pretty hot and heavy in March.
Absolutely.
So that's why I talked to Councilor Yarck about, but give us a 60 day, and let's do the best we can.
As long as Council's comfortable with that, I'm...
Yeah, we'll find that out when it comes to...
And speaking to the 60 day, I would like to, you know, even if it's not completed, the committee could come back and ask for an extension, and even after 60 days, I'd like to hear what's, as part of that, there would be a report back of how it's going, and I definitely, because the board definitely has some concerns, I definitely would like to hear something back, especially since we'll be going into budget right about, right after that time also.
And that's part of why I think it's on the agenda tonight, too.
Yeah, very good. Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a, just on, since you have the multiple boards getting together, I'm sure a lot of other things might come up, and we probably want to capture those at those meetings, but this meeting is focused strictly on the director position, but we want to capture that, so in that regard, do we need somebody from maybe the clerk staff to take minutes or to kind of capture that, or are we going to rely on the library board secretary, just to...
I don't know, Mr. City Manager?
We can certainly have somebody from staff, they're taking notes, if that would make...
You know, with the shortened timeframe, just, and we want to make sure it's concise and things are captured, I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, because you can kind of have those meetings and it could be spun out of control with other issues, and we want to focus on this specific issue in that short timeframe, but don't want to lose the other things that'll come up.
Yeah.
So are you saying, sorry, you're saying somebody from clerk staff taking notes so that those ideas at least get logged?
Logged, and then, I don't know if we want to have a formal minutes?
No, I would agree, both, whenever the boards convene, they have minutes, and they have, I mean, doesn't, each board has their own minutes, too. I agree with Councilor Mistravich as well, that having it be well documented, just so when we go back to look at the minutes, that it's understood and everything's clear.
Is that something we're going to start doing with all of our committees?
No, I, I think this is a unique situation, because we've never addressed anything like this or had a circumstance like this before in past history.
Right. I was just bringing it up, I don't know if we want to, but it just seems...
How about this, Michael, how about, once the board is selected, if we see where this conversation goes, if it becomes an issue with what you brought up, then I would hope that the City Manager would then take upon himself to have one of our clerks here to take minutes, would that be fair?
It's fair, yeah.
Would that be fair? Because we're talking comp time or paying this person overtime to be here, and I don't know that, I think it's pretty clear what it is that we have to look at, given this letter, but I completely understand what you're also saying, there could be some side discussions, but I think we're going to have to stay very focused, especially the 60 days is going to make it very focused on what it is, the task at hand to research, you know, the whole, the whole issue, you know? So personally, I would rather not have to pay somebody extra to be there or comp time.
Do either board, how do the, how does the library board take their minutes?
The library board, I believe, Julianne, or somebody, rec board, Dawn takes the minutes, Council, Karen takes the minutes, the library board, I haven't been there, but I believe...
Isn't it usually signed by a recording secretary of the board?
Right, and I don't know who actually takes them, I guess, more than likely it could be the recording secretary, yeah, the city staff takes the other two boards' minutes, that board, I don't believe city staff does unless Julianne does the minutes, for instance, at EDC, the city planner takes the minutes, but not always the case, I know Cable, one of the commissioners, takes the minutes, and I just apologize, I don't know in the library who is taking them.
Yeah, Cable, the secretary, takes the minutes.
Yeah.
Let's remember, it's not a, it's not a commission, it is a committee of the different boards to look into the subject, I don't think we have to keep formal minutes on this, unless it gets to that point where we have to, I just, I don't think we're going to get to that point, I've never seen the need on any of the committees that we've ever had in the past where we had to have a clerk separate from the committee taking minutes, I don't, at least I don't remember offhand that we've had to do that before. So I think, I think we can, I think we can handle it in, you know, within the committee, if we can't, then certainly we can, the City Manager can, has the authority to bring a clerk in, does that work out for you, Michael?
Yeah, it's fine, yeah.
If I understand what you're saying, and that will be cognizant of the fact...
Yeah, I was just kind of concerned with the short timeframe and the multiple boards and a lot of different issues within the rec department and, you know, library, just to make sure that we don't lose that.
Right.
You know, just to have an open discussion, and a lot of things get lost, that's all.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, I completely understand what you're saying. Okay.
I mean, Mr. Mayor, I mean, would, if that's something you would like in the motion as an option for that committee, that if they so, it would be authorized if they so chose to ask for it, they could...
I don't think they need a motion.
I think if the committee, if we get to the committee and the committee wants somebody there, I can certainly bring somebody in from staff, you know, I don't think, you know, I think if that's the direction the committee's, we have a meeting and it's all over the map and hard for me to, and Julianne to look at our notes and remember what was going on, I mean, we will have two staff people, both of us probably, more than likely, taking notes and then being able to compare, but if that's not enough, then certainly I'll be able to bring somebody in, I would think Council would understand if I do.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion on this item? Can't remember if we went to the audience, is there any public comment? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Against, motion passes. We need a motion to put those two members on. I had asked Jamie, when the letter came, Jamie is a big patron of the library, she also has years of service on the Parks and Rec Board, I think she would be good on the committee, and I personally have been your liaison to the Parks and Rec Board, and have been very close to the library for many, many, many years, I would like to serve on this committee, so I'd ask that Jamie and myself be appointing to the committee if there would be a motion to that effect, or whatever motion Council feels they would like to bring to the table right now.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'll go ahead with the motion to appoint Counselor Green and Mayor Ricks to the library board letter concern committee.
Library board. LPCC.
First order of business, a new name for the committee.
You didn't even know it.
Hey, hold on.
So he's making two motions.
That's what you're stuck with.
Yeah, motion's been made, it's our support.
I support that.
Support, discussion. Appreciate that motion. Any audience comments on this? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. I'll ask the City Manager. You had said Parks and Rec is January 7th?
Correct.
And library probably may or may not meet in January?
I noticed in the past, it's in the, the new one right there, sorry.
Oh, you got the new one.
No, I was just, you're over, sorry. But there's not listed, I'm sorry, go to the new one on January, yeah, I'm sorry. In the past, they had some members that would not be here in the winter, so I'd like...
Yeah. Library board usually is a fourth week, is it, or third week, I should say? Yep, there it is, no, that's Friends. No, they don't.
They don't. They have three members on the board, I think they might be able to have a special meeting in the next week or two, I'll talk to Julianne about getting them together and appointing two people.
Okay. If at all possible, if we could get together as soon as possible in January, and if you could convey onto those boards that we need people that can attend meetings at night, or whatever it can be to take, to get this taken care of, that can commit to the time and effort, and that it also is a 60 day window, as the motion was made, just so that we can, you know, hopefully, you know, get some people...
You don't want somebody on that isn't Florida till March.
Oh, yeah?
No, I'm, I understand.
I'm going to Florida till March.
Maybe you guys could have to beat a kid in Florida.
There you go, yeah. Okay, very good, we move on to item number three, consideration of appointment to the Planning Commission, Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider making appointment to the Planning Commission, there is currently one vacancy on the commission, and we have recently received an application from Dean Roberts, we did receive one as well this morning, but Mr. Roberts's application as protocol was in their packets a week ago.
Thank you, sir, I would ask the City Council to confirm my appointment of Dean Roberts to the Planning Commission for a three-year term, is there a motion?
I make a motion to confirm the mayor's appointment of Dean Roberts to the Planning Commission for a three-year term with an expiration date of 6/30/2015.
Support. Motion's been made and supported, discussion. Dean, as we all know, ran for City Council, was going to make a commitment there, he did not make it, since there was four of us running, or was it five of us running for four seats this time, okay, but he showed the commitment to the community by running, I felt at that time that he needs to get his feet wet, Planning Commission has needed somebody for quite some time, I think he'll be a great asset to our Planning Commission, especially with his background in building, especially, so I'm hoping the Council will confirm this appointment. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I, I do agree, I appreciate Mr. Roberts' efforts and his commitment to the community and running for City Council, we've had some good discussions. Also, I noticed that for some reason, he is so committed, he is growing a beard, just like our planner, so apparently, maybe he thought that to be a part of planning, they had to both have beards, so, good job, Mr. Roberts.
Any audience comments? Troy?
As the Planning and Economic Development Director, I've worked with Dean through the years with his affiliation through Phoenix Development, and I believe he would be a good addition to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Dean?
Dean, your address?
Yep. Yeah, somebody special?
34836 Quail Trail. No, I think this would be the right fit for me, and if I could off script a little bit, the whole election process, I learned a great deal, and everybody, even those who weren't rerunning, were treating me like family, so, I'm proud to be a resident of the city, so, thank you very much.
Welcome to the family. Any other comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion passes. Thank you, Dean. Moving on. City Manager's comments, sir?
On the table tonight, I put out a flyer just as a reminder, Shop With Cop is this weekend, Sergeant Ferris here tonight, and mentioned that if Council's interested in volunteering for that event, contact dispatch at 727-4000, I know many Council members in the past have volunteered, so, just a reminder, I know with, kind of the way Thanksgiving fell, this is a real short time period on Christmas, so, dates are getting away from us, so just a reminder, Shop With Cop this weekend on Saturday. The ice rink is open, ice rink got open today, they went over and got the snow off of it, and so, it's open, we'll be getting that out on the website, too, shortly, but if you have people that have kids that like to skate and play hockey, it's now open. Reminder that Council allowed city staff to take Monday off with their own leave time, so we will be closed starting after this Friday until after Christmas, so just a reminder on that. And that's all I have.
Very good. Moving on to Council comments, Michael?
Just wanted, I was out of town during the Christmas tree lighting and Santa's parade, but always liked to attend that and wish I was there, but congratulations to Mayor Protown Jim Schultz for putting on another great parade, seems to get bigger and better every year, and it's nice to see all the decorations in town as well. Thank you.
Very good.
I was in town for it, and it really did turn out great this year, thanks to the city staff and Mayor Protown Jim Schultz, he was extremely nervous, especially at the end, when people don't pull out at the right times, but, but he calmed down quickly afterwards, so, just wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, too.
Also, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, everybody, but Mr. Tree Lighting, I was at George Hamlin's retirement party and presented the resolution, and he just wanted to thank everybody, which I'm sure you've seen the article in the paper, too, but I told him I personally thank everybody on board.
Thank you, I had to give the key to Santa, so I couldn't get up there on behalf of the Council, and you did a great job, and what I heard. Jeffrey?
To concur with everything that's already been said, again, it feels, myself, Mayor Ricks, and City Manager more, he got to go to the state of the county, and it was a nice event, things like, things are up and really running in this county, and it was really, and then, more important, I think more important than the state of the county is the discussion after with so many elected officials, and really, a lot of the conversation was regionalism, I mean, you bump into people from different communities, and everybody seemed to be talking about, hey, what can we do together, what are you guys doing together, can we do something together, so it was really great to see that kind of conversation, you know, happening with all these other communities, so that was real positive. And another great year of working together on this council, I look forward to another, it's a difficult time, but a council coming together to work through it next year.
Very good. Jenny?
I'd like to also say Merry Christmas to everybody, and fantastic parade and Santa and a great Christmas event, and just a shout out to, a thank you to the odd for opening their facility for us to use, and, and I don't know if any of you caught the play this weekend, but, you know, there, the majority of the people who work there are all volunteers, and they were able to put on a show where every child who auditioned got a part, and the show was fantastic on top of it, so, just the way they have become part of our community, and just also our residents, to remember that they're a nonprofit organization and that they're funded through private donations and tickets, and just to thank them for what they do, and just to continue to support them in our community.
Good. Joe?
I would like to take this time to thank everybody that helped me with the, with the Santa parade this year, Chief Teske, the Police Department, Richmond Volunteer Fire Department, Caitlin from The Voice, that put a very nice article in there, which stimulates the crowd, you know, so that, that really helped, all the participants that show up, you know, I've got my standbys, I come every year, this year I had three or four new ones, Jeff Goodar, my right-hand man, keeps me under control down there, that I, I have the opportunity to walk and talk to the, everybody that's down there, I think I put five miles on my, my legs that night, and, but allows me to go talk to the people that put all the work in there, I mean, because you just don't do that, you know, in 15 minutes, and I think, I think it looked, looked very nice, one of these years I'm going to get to see it, I don't know when. I don't know when, but one of these years. And Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody.
It was a very nice parade, especially it slowed down the work of it this year, and those of us that were at The Odd waiting for it to come through, it was very nice because you could really take in all the work that had been done to so many of those entries in there, so that was, that was, that was a great improvement this year also. So, that was great, Santa was great, kids were great, we had a number of kids this year, even as cold as it was, that was, that was a good showing, real good showing for a Friday night, so, and I concur with everything else that's been said, a very Merry Christmas. I tried to get city council to get together, to sing Merry Christmas to everybody, but they just didn't have the time to get together, it's like trying to plan a meeting with everybody, but anyhow, we will forego the, the song, we will go to the calendar, being December, nine days before Christmas, it's unbelievable. As was mentioned before, the city hall and the library will be closed on Christmas Eve Day, Christmas Day, and Thursday following Christmas Day. You're right, or no, do I have that wrong? I'm sorry, it's the twenty-third, we're going to be closed.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
I'm sorry, exactly, I have that wrong. City Hall and the library will be closed Monday, the twenty-third, and then Christmas Eve Day, of course, and Christmas Day will be back open on the twenty-sixth. The community center will be closed Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and the day after Christmas, the twenty-sixth. Then again, city hall will be closed on the thirtieth and the thirty-first, and do we reopen?
On the second.
On the second, January second, everybody will reopen, so, it does not say here that the community center is closed, but it might, to assume that the community center will be closed.
Uh, would that be on the new calendar?
On the newest one?
Under January, I believe, so if it's not on there, they were doing fewer days.
Yeah, no, it doesn't, uh...
Okay, then they're probably open on the third.
Oh, yes, it does, right here it says, that the city hall, community center, and the library will be closed on New Year's Day, and, okay, and it will reopen on Thursday, like it did after Christmas, so, okay. And then after, after that, we have our next regular scheduled council meeting on January sixth, rec board is to meet on the seventh at seven o'clock, right here at city hall. Do we have a planning commission meeting?
No items as of right now, but we do have an economic development corporation meeting this Wednesday.
This Wednesday?
So, the day after tomorrow.
The eighteenth?
Yep.
EDC will meet here at city hall at seven o'clock on the eighteenth. Okay? You will still, are you still going to meet in January, then?
Uh, EDC is not scheduled to meet in January.
Okay, okay, okay. So, more than likely, there's a very good possibility that there will be no planning commission on the ninth. And that's it, we're pretty good?
Yeah, we got roundtable there.
Oh, yeah, the thirteenth is a special meeting, is that on your calendar?
I wrote it on your calendar.
Okay. All right, on the thirteenth is the reg, the quarterly roundtable meeting that will start at six? Okay, at six o'clock here at city hall. Is there anything else we need to add to the calendar? Be or not, we move on. There is no closed session, is there any other business of the city council this evening? Be or not? Motion adjourned, be in order.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Support.
Motion's been made, support, there is no discussion on the motion, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Thanks for being here, Merry Christmas to everybody.